Good evening and welcome to the May 7, 2024 City Council Meeting. It's now being called to order. Invocation will be by Councilwoman Hiller. I will turn it to her, but I do ask that you please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm going to spend a little time on introduction. I've chosen to feature churches who have history with the Brown v. Board case this month in recognition of the 70th anniversary coming up on May 17. So I'll be introducing Reverend May Hall, who's been pastor of St. John AME at 7th and Topeka for the past almost three years. In case you've wondered what AME stands for, it means African Methodist Episcopal, and that means that the denomination is focused on providing opportunities and support to African Americans, was founded and still remains connected to the Methodist Church denomination, and is governed with an Episcopal style of bishops. St. John's was first established in 1868 in Topeka in what was called the Alley Barn, a structure that was located near what we would now call St. Joseph's, the riverfront area between Harrison and Van Buren. Starting in 1879, the congregation built and moved into their first church on the corner of 2nd and Madison in an area we now call the Bottoms. That lasted for almost 30 years. In 1908, the congregation tore that building down and moved into the beginnings of the church we see today at 7th and Topeka. That structure went through three construction phases and was fully completed in 1926. Today, that structure continues and is on the National Register of Historic Places. Although St. John AME Church's primary mission revolves around religious services, St. John's has also played a significant role in various American social movements since 1868. Those movements include black migration, assisting ex-slaves and freedmen in pursuit of freedom and a better standard of living during the exoduster movement in the late 1800s; literacy; St. John's created Sunday schools and other social organizations; and starting in the 1870s and 80s to today, was a prominent host for discussions of political, social, literary, and religious issues; equality and civil rights being the third. As early as the 1870s, St. John's took on issues such as educational segregation and public accommodations. Many members were involved in the activity that resulted in the Brown v. Board of Education case, and that high level of understanding and engagement continues today. Reverend Hall accepted the call to pastor St. John's in 2021. She hails from Columbia, Missouri, and came to us from a pastorate in Kansas City. She likes how our city comes together, she says, watching to see how people here help those in need and help the homeless. Reverend Hall.
I just want to use one verse before I pray, the song that Peter, Paul, and Mary wrote. If I had a hammer, I'd hammer in the morning, I'd hammer in the evening all over the land. I'd hammer out danger, I'll hammer out warning, I'd hammer out love between my brothers and sisters all over the land. Let us pray. As we gather here today in this esteemed city hall, we come with hearts filled with hope and a desire for justice and unity in our community. We are reminded of the powerful message conveyed in the song, "If I Had a Hammer." Just as the hammer symbolizes the tools for building and creating change, may we too be instruments of positive transformation in our city. Grant us the strength and wisdom to use our voices and action to uphold justice, equality, and dignity for all. Like the bell that rings out for freedom, may our actions echo a call for solidarity and compassion. Let us work together, hand in hand, to forge a future where every voice is heard and every individual is valued. As we deliberate and make decisions tonight, may we be guided by the spirit of unity and cooperation, striving always to build bridges rather than walls and to uplift rather than divide. We offer this prayer with humility and guidance and gratitude and trusting in your divine guidance as we strive to create a more justice and compassionate society. Well, I've got a hammer, and I've got a bell, and I've got a song to sing all over the land. It's the hammer of justice, it's the bell of freedom, it's the song about love between my brothers and my sisters all over the land. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, if you could go ahead and call the roll.
Hey, Mayor Padilla. Deputy Mayor Valdivia Aquila.
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Here.
Ortiz. Banks.
Here.
Kell.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Dobler.
Here.
Duncan.
Here.
And Hofer.
Here.
All right, we have eight.
Thank you for that. We'll now go on to mayoral proclamations, so I'll be taking a little visit down here. I would like to call up Amy Finger and any letter carriers or additional folks that are with her. I'm going to read this, and then I'll ask if you have any comments. A proclamation by the mayor. Whereas every year on the second Saturday in May, letter carriers across the country collect nonperishable food as part of the nation's largest single-day food drive. And whereas the letter carriers' Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive is just one example of how letter carriers work to make a difference to the lives of those they serve. We recognize the Capital City Branch 10 Letter Carriers for their hard work and their commitment to Topeka and Shawnee County. And whereas we recognize the noteworthy milestone of 32 years that the National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive celebrates in 2024, resulting in collection of more than 1.9 billion pounds of food across the country. Now therefore, I, Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 11, 2024, as Letter Carriers Food Drive Day in the city of Topeka and Shawnee County, and encourage the citizens of our community to support the food drive by placing nonperishable food items in or near your mailbox on Food Drive Day. Your letter carrier will pick it up while delivering the mail, and together, we can all help to feed our neighbors. In witness whereof, I'm Michael A. Padilla, Mayor of the city of Topeka, Kansas, do hereby affix my official signature and the official seal of the city of Topeka, Kansas, on this 7th day of May, 2024. Thank you.
I'm Michelle Jawison, President of the Local Union National Association of Letter Carriers. I'd like to say thank you for the recognition, and I'd like to point out that this is the Letter Carriers Food Drive, it's not the Post Office Food Drive. It's the letter carriers are the people who coordinate it and put it all together. We're the ones who do it. So don't be afraid to leave the food out for your letter carrier. If you don't want to overwork your letter carrier, you can always drop it off at the post office, but we partner with Harvesters because they have all the volunteers that can come out and help the letter carriers pick up the food on Food Drive Day. So don't let that stop you from leaving the food. We make a fun day of it, so.
And I want to share just a couple of numbers to recognize the incredible efforts of these letter carriers behind me that have been beside me making this possible. My name's Amy Finger with Harvesters. Last year, Shawnee County Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive brought in 53,000 pounds of food and household supplies to benefit Harvesters Network of Partner Agencies.
I will hand it over to you, City Manager.
All the food that's collected here in Topeka and Shawnee County stays here in Topeka and
Deputy Mayor and Governing Body, first presentation is about the Downtown Business
Shawnee County and benefits our partner agencies. Since 2017, this food drive has brought in 322,000 pounds of food in Shawnee County,
Improvement District Annual Update, and Ashley Gilfillian.
I love it.
enough to provide an estimated 269,000 meals.
How far off was I on that?
You were 90% with everybody else in the world.
Again, all of that food stays right here to meet the need.
All right. Listen, I know how that feels with my last name, so I apologize.
This drive comes at a critical time for us because we know food insecurity is at its worst over the several months.
No worries.
In Shawnee County, 16,000 individuals are food insecure, meaning that they do not know
So Ashley Gilfillian here on behalf of DTI to give you a little bit of an update, as
where their next meal is coming from.
well as a preview of what's to behold for our 2025.
There are 5,890 who are under the age of 18. The annual meal gap in Shawnee County is 2.9 million meals.
A lot of the numbers you'll see kind of from 2024 to 2025 on our budget are a little
This food drive comes at a critical time.
bit of a copy and paste, with the exception of our landscape improvements, which we've
We thank you so much for the recognition, for the support, and I cannot say enough
actually come down on. So the city has the contract for the beds downtown and the corner beds that we've noticed,
about the amazing carriers that we have here, Capital City Branch 10 Letter Carriers. Thank you.
so we've reduced that significantly and reallocated that to our insurance, which in this day and age, you wouldn't think of parades and community events as being high-risk events. However, in the time we live in, those events have actually become high-risk, and we witnessed that unfortunately last year when we had a driver go through one of the barricades at the Christmas Miracle on Kansas Avenue Parade. So insurance has gone up quite a bit on some of those events, so we reallocated some of that money to go towards our insurance. The other money we're reallocating to go to support our events. So what we've noticed is downtown, as it grows, is becoming less and less of our retail destination that we once thought of it as, but a lot of downtowns are adapting to becoming entertainment districts. So what we're seeing is a lot more people want to have their events downtown. We're seeing a lot of interest in Jayhawk Theater, we're seeing a lot of interest in Everdew Plaza, in hosting things at places like The Beacon and Townsite, which is great for our community, but they also need a little bit of help, so we're here to offer that. We don't call it sponsoring events because we don't want anything in return. It's just an investment in our community, so we invest in these events in hoping that the first few years we can get them going, and years later, they might be able to sustain on their own, and we can just continually bring in new events. Some of the events that we saw last year for this would have been India Mela, For the Culture, Irish Fest, so we want to make sure that we're having all of these festivals as well. And for this year, we're actually looking at diversifying some of that program. So what that does is it introduces a new community of people that might not have come downtown to downtown. So we did the Cinco de Mayo event yesterday, two days ago, sorry. My schedule was a little off. Ron Ruiz was kind enough to put that on. He asked if we'd be interested in investing a little bit. We helped him out, and that introduced us into a group of people that we were down there all day Sunday, and we saw probably 2,000 people consistently on the plaza, and throughout the day, that shifted as to being different people throughout the day. It wasn't the same amount of people. We have a Fight Night coming up on May 18. That's a new market for us, so we're investing in sanction fights. Let's go ahead and say that, so there aren't any random fights occurring. They are sanction fights. This was actually the same card that was on Showtime, so it will be a bigger event for downtown Topeka, but you know, that's not a demographic that we typically reach out to to get them in there. And then as well, we have a cello event with the Topeka Cello Collective. We'll be putting on something later this year at Everdew Plaza and playing along the movie scores. So there's again, trying to be diverse with our programming and our investing, and the bid advisory board does a really good job of making sure that those funds are getting allocated in different areas. The other thing that we're looking at really kind of changing up in this year is our maintenance as far as the timing of it and how often, based on common consumption. We don't know what we don't know yet, but we do know that if it works as planned, hopefully it will be an uptick in people going up and down our streets, and hopefully there will be more trash located in the trash cans and not littered on those streets. But that's going to require us to empty trash more and think about strategically where those trash cans are located as well. So we're watching common consumption and seeing how we can make sure to use that to our favor and not as a deterrent. I think it's a great thing so far, everybody's really on board. And then working with Clean and Safe Task Force to create more of an ambassador program. So we were very reactive in that first year on how to get things, handle on some of the things, and now that we're catching our breath a little bit, we'd really like to be proactive in adopting some of those more national standards of how they're not only defeating the uptick in disturbances, but preventing them to begin with. So that's kind of where we're putting our focuses on. If anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Is there any questions, comments? Councilman Kell.
So you mentioned your insurance has gone up on some of these events. Is there anything the city can do to help with that, where maybe better barricading or more first responders, anything like that, that might be able to help with that, with kind of probably be a growing cost?
That is a really good question. I don't know. I'd have to talk to our events team to get with the insurance provider and talk about mitigation, if there's a certain level of mitigation that we can provide that offsets it, but not to my knowledge, and it's not even necessarily for things that have happened because when we first realized the insurance cost had gone up, it was prior to that person actually driving through, but it's just that state of the world that it's unfortunately not an uncommon thing to happen at community events or where there's gatherings, but we'll definitely look into that for sure.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions? Councilman Dobler.
I don't know if you're taking suggestions for events, but I'm thinking boxing and cellos. I think we could combine those and probably have a unique event.
That's probably a population we really haven't discovered yet, but there might be one out there. There's something for everybody.
I think it's all wide open. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Hiller.
Just thank you for all you do, and I do think that they're doing mimosa yoga, Councilman Dobler, so you know, you can kind of.
Well, it won't be yoga, as much as it'll just be walking with the ability to common consumption downtown. We're going to capitalize on that a little bit and know that we handle brunch better than anybody in Topeka with all of our locations, so we're going to work on that.
I have a comment. I would like to say that I thought that the crowd for Cinco de Mayo was great. I was there to read a proclamation for Mayor Padilla for Cinco de Mayo, and I think my sense is, and what has gone on with other events where there is a high outturn, whether we refer to ourselves as Latinos, Chicanos, Mexicans, Mexican-Americans, I think that we've showed that we can bring the numbers and we spend the money. So it was really wonderful to see everything that Ronald and his crew put on. There were all ages there, and it was really a good time to see it out there. Additionally, my household is very excited about seeing the boxing. We're rooting for John Cantrell, and so we know that he's getting some help with putting it on. The last thing I would like to say is, I think it's so wonderful when you all have your movie nights, and my husband and I will drive down Kansas Avenue, and we'll see all types of families there watching the movies that are on the screen, and if there is anything that makes Topeka feel possible, exciting, and family-oriented, it is what you see happening on Kansas Avenue. So thank you for all that you do.
Yeah, I don't get to do much of it anymore now since I've left my Everdew Plaza hat, but to see what they're able to do and continue with, there's a reason that our Kansas avenues, and I say avenues because it includes NODO, are the core of our community. You know, you can replicate Wanamakers anywhere in the United States, but our Kansas avenues together are what makes us a team and what makes us our city, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, the next presentation, City Manager.
Deputy Mayor and Governing Body, TMTA Annual Update, and I'm just going to say that Scott's coming up to speak to you about this, and he's the board chair. I didn't want to butcher your last name either.
Hello, thank you for presenting today.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. First of all, I'd like to start by introducing, we have Rod Miller, which is the Chair of our Financial Committee. Robert Nugent is the General Manager of TMTA, and Kingda Stiles is the Vice Chair of the Metro Board. All right. Okay. All right. Go ahead and, there we go. All right. Through our service adjustments, we've made several throughout our routes as a result of time evaluations or performance audits. Two routes, we have had changed to 60-minute routes versus the original 30-minute routes that they were. Another one was realigned due to changes in performance levels on that route, and then we had nearly one-third of our routes that had been changed in some manner due to timing evaluations. Next slide. How do you get to the next slide? Oh, you got it. Okay, thank you. As you can see on this graph, it shows our monthly ridership since 2018 to current January 2024, and you can see even with the downfall in passengers during the COVID, we still maintain 70% of our ridership through the pandemic. This would indicate that the majority of our riders are on a reliance or need basis for the transit versus what we would call others that would be choice riders and choose that type of transportation. And although COVID's changed in how we work, where we work, and how we shop, we are still seeing the comeback of ridership and reaching nearly 85% of our pre-COVID levels. Our paratransit is mandated by the American Disabilities Act. In attempts to keep this cost low, we have outsourced some of the rides to private providers to provide that service to them. Our Metro On Demand, or MOD, is going into its second year, and not only does MOD provide door-to-door service within the zone, it also provides door-to-bus stop trips, so residents will be able to more easily access and utilize the fixed route systems throughout the city. Still in its infancy stage, as ridership continues to grow, but will still be evaluated to determine what MOD can become and how it will or can assist the current system. The Topeka Metro has invested into the electric bus market. We have been awarded two separate grants, one for the purchase of electric vehicles. Our 2019 grant allowed us to purchase three buses, and then we have a 2023 grant that will allow us to purchase an additional four more electrical buses. Along with FTA grants for electric buses, we also received grants for diesel vehicles, and we continue to update our fleets on that. At the end of last year and beginning of this year, we was able to put nine more buses into service from that grant. This leaves 24 remaining vehicles, 17 of those being buses, and seven of those being the paratransit vehicles that need to be replaced by the year 2026. Like most employers, we do continue to struggle to recruit and retain employees, and we are just beginning to enter into the electric bus psychology and will have to see what the unknown issues that will emerge and how they can be resolved. We also have limitations on manufacturers, especially in the paratransit vehicles, will create issues in future replacement of our fleets. And communication systems need to be updated, and we are currently working with the Shawnee County Emergency Management to determine what system will work best for us. I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. Is there any questions or comments? Councilman Miller.
Deputy Mayor, thank you for presenting today. Being new to the council, I'm not sure, but I know there's a lot of people out here who want me to ask this question, so I'm going to go ahead and ask it. How close are we, and are we ever going to be able to get people from Montero?
As of right now, no. That is not within the realm of the transportation. I don't know when that will happen, if it will happen, but as of right now, we don't have the resources to reach out that far.
I'm sure there's a few councilmembers who have a better answer of the history of it to be able to tell me, and I'll speak with them after, I just wanted to know from you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Duncan.
So we are in the midst of discussing what we're going to do with our fleet garage because we have to tear it down through the KDOT Polquidsey viaduct. One of us, namely me, also understands that you folks at some point in the nearer future than later are going to need to do something with your garage, both because it's old and two because there are people, as they develop the riverfront, that just sort of want it out of the way, so there will be pressure at some point to do that. So you don't have to commit to this tonight, but one of the things I have floated several times we've gotten into that discussion is, seems silly to me, since we are both city agencies, to not develop some fleet garage that includes both of us, both the city and the transit authority, that could work cooperatively. I guess my question is, is your organization even open to that conversation, and has anyone approached you folks about that idea to date?
To my knowledge, we have not been approached by it. I mean, I guess it just depends on what was actually discussed and what was being brought forward, whether, you know, there'd be a decision to look into that.
Sure. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Last call. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move on to the consent agenda. Brenda, if you could please read.
A and B are resolutions introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting the Celtic Fox an accession to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-150 at seat concerning noise prohibitions. See as approval of a professional legal services contract between the City of Topeka, Kansas and Legal Services Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $84,137 for the administration of the eviction defense program. D is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstand authorizing initiation of condemnation proceedings to acquire an easement for a street intersection reconstruction project at 6th and Oakley. E is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of February 24 to March 29, 2024, and enumerating said expenditures therein. F is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad naming banks and savings institutions that are designated as depositories for all City of Topeka accounts, and authorizing signatures and rescinding City of Topeka Resolution Number 9489. G is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad authorizing the City of Topeka's participation in the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool, and authorizing signatures and rescinding City of Topeka Resolution Number 9490. Minutes of the special meetings of April 12 and April 23, and the regular meeting of April 16, and there's a list of off-premise license applications, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Brenda, for that, too. I have a motion to approve. Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Miller, and are we, how are we voting today?
Roll call. Yep, you roll call.
Okay, roll call, vote.
Okay, Councilmembers Ortiz. Is that a yes? I can't.
That was a yes.
Okay. Kell.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Valdivia Aquila.
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. Now we move on to number five, the action items, and we move to 5A. Brenda, if you could go ahead and.
A is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad making.
of the eviction defense program. D is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstand authorizing initiation of condemnation proceedings to acquire an easement for a street intersection reconstruction project at Sixth and Oakley. E is an ordinance introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of February 24 to March 29, 2024, and enumerating said expenditures therein. F is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad naming banks and savings institutions that are designated as depositaries for all City of Topeka accounts and authorizing signatures and rescinding City of Topeka Resolution Number 9489. G is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad authorizing the City of Topeka's participation in the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool and authorizing signatures and rescinding City of Topeka Resolution Number 9490. Minutes are H is minutes of the special minutes of the special meetings of April 12 and April 23 and the regular meeting of April 16. And there's a list of off-premise license applications, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you, Brenda, for that, too. I have a motion to approve. Councilman Dobler, second by Councilman Miller. And are we, how are we voting today?
Roll call. Yep. Roll call.
Okay. Roll call. Vote.
Okay. Councilmembers Ortiz. Is that a yes? I can't.
That was a yes.
Okay. Kel.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
All right. We have nine yes. The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Now we move on to number five, the action items, and we move to 5A. Brenda, if you could go ahead and.
A is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad making certain findings pursuant to Kansas Reinvestment Housing Incentive District Act with regard to an application submitted by Gen 3 Construction and Development LLC to establish a reinvestment housing incentive district and requesting that the Kansas Secretary of Commerce review the resolution and advise the governing body.
And City Manager.
Deputy Mayor and Governing Body, Brianna Friedman, who is our Planning and Development Director, will make this presentation to you.
Thank you. Brianna.
Yeah. Good evening. Go ahead. Thank you. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Governing Body members. So the first application I have tonight is a Phase 1 RHID application for Myers Place subdivision by Gen 3 Construction. To give a little brief overview, the City of Topeka received an application requesting the creation of the district for Myers Place subdivision. Tonight, staff is seeking approval at our meeting to send this district forward to Kansas Department of Commerce for their review. If you'll recall, that's the next step, first phase is an application submittal, then sending it to Department of Commerce. If approved by Department of Commerce, it will come back in front of this body with a Phase 2 application. That will have a project plan and a detailed development agreement that will be reviewed and voted on at a later date.
Thank you for that. Governing Body, do we have any comments? Questions? Nothing? Okay. I am told, please correct me if I'm wrong, this is allowed for public comment? Any public comment?
Nobody has signed up.
Nobody has signed up? Okay. So then we will move for a motion to approve. By Councilman Banks.
Second.
Second by Councilman Miller.
Thank you.
If we want to go ahead and move on to the vote.
Councilmembers Banks.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
And Councilmember Ortiz. Yes. Okay. We have nine yes. The motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to Action Item 5B. City Clerk, if you would read.
He has a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad making certain findings pursuant to the Kansas Reinvestment Housing Incentive District Act with regard to an application submitted by Gen 3 Construction and Development LLC to establish a reinvestment housing incentive district and requesting that the Kansas Secretary of Commerce review the resolution and advise the governing body.
And City Manager.
Deputy Mayor and Governing Body, Brianna Friedman, Planning and Development Director, will also make this presentation to you.
Thank you. So this is the Phase 1 RHID application for Sherwood Professional Park. You'll see this is also Gen 3 Construction and Development. The developer was very timely in pulling their items together to pull the trigger on both of these projects as they understand the demand for all types of housing. So very similar in the request, seeking approval to send to Department of Commerce. Skipping through here, I can talk a little bit about the district itself. So Sherwood Professional Park is proposed to add 10 for-rent duplexes, so creating 20 total three-bedroom, two-bathroom dwelling units. Each will have a two-car garage. At this point, we'll have more information when they come back with their Phase 2 application, but the target for this is certainly market rate, multifamily rental pricing will be their target cost. This shows a little depiction. So Sherwood Professional Park is located at the southeast corner of Southwest 29th and Southwest Villa Drive. So the map on the right shows the M2 zoning that was adopted by the Planning Commission on May 15, and then followed by the Governing Body meeting on May 13, or June 13, sorry. So this parcel was previously zoned O and I, 1 and 2, and so the shift from O and I to M2 was to allow some density and to be able to bring in these affordable housing duplexes here as well. So the application was submitted on March 14 to us, and like I said, seeking approval tonight to move this forward to Department of Commerce so that we can get an application in front of you with more details. Happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brianna. And is there any questions? Councilman Duncan.
Okay. So walk me through this.
Yep.
So I voted against this last June, but I thought it was coming back to us for some further approvals. Apparently, there was miscommunication because during the planning meeting, there were several folks in that area who showed up and opposed it and had many questions. So if we approve this tonight, goes for approval to the RHID, at that point, it comes back to us for what are we approving? The RHID itself or the development itself? I mean, is this point, is this development RHID or not, whatever that factors into happening?
Yes. So if not for the RHID, the development itself would not come in front of the governing body unless they were seeking some type of incentive. The rezoning, what was what came in front of the governing body and was voted on? So since it is an RHID, yes, you will receive more information about the project and be able to vote whether to proceed and move forward with the incentive package. But I will say, addressing some of the concerns I think that were outlined, there will be a full site plan review of this, understanding that parking, traffic, all of those things will be addressed during that process when they get a little further down the road with the development.
Right. They'll be addressed, but in terms of it coming back to us for any of those approvals, that's a done deal, correct? I mean, there's no need unless there's another change to those that it ends up back in front of us.
Correct. I will say you will have some time during the RHID process to maybe have that conversation. The developer will be present for that and can speak to their application, so if you have questions, they would be able to address that at that point in time.
Okay. Because I'm just going to tell you that there are still a lot of questions that are not being answered by the people who live right around there, and there's growing frustration because work's being done, but nobody really understands what's going to happen. And so that includes people who went to that meeting, because I think the project changed a little from its initial, not a lot, but I mean, I think there's already been some changes. So some more information would be great.
Understood.
But I'm still going to vote against it tonight.
Any other questions or comments? Questions, comments? Okay. So no public comments. So is there a motion to approve? Councilman Dobler, motion to approve, second. Kel, Councilman Kel. And if you would go ahead and call the roll.
Councilmembers Kel.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
No.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla.
No.
Councilmember Ortiz.
Yes.
Is she? What did she say? I didn't hear.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Ann Banks.
Yes.
All right. We have seven yes, with Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla and Councilmember Duncan voting no. Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Now we move on to, and help me stay on track here, Brenda, if I get my if I get my alphabet wrong here, onto 5C. And if you could read.
C is a resolution introduced by interim City Manager Richard Neinstad supporting the City of Topeka's application for funding from the Kansas Department of Transportation for Topeka Bike Ways Phase 5 implementation.
Okay. And City Manager.
Deputy Mayor and Governing Body, it appears to me that Braxton Copley will be leaving this discussion with you.
All right. Good evening, Braxton.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We are asking for your approval of a resolution in support of our Transportation Alternative Program grant application to KDOT. Normally, the TA grants are an 80-20 split with KDOT picking up 80% and the city picking up 20%. KDOT has informed us that we are eligible for an additional 20% to become out of federal funding under the Highway Safety Improvement Program or the HSIP program. If we're successful getting both the grant and the HSIP funding, potentially, we would be able to fund these projects with no city funding unless there were ineligible costs. So with that, I'll gladly stand for any questions. I will just point out that the three projects that we're applying for grants for are all part of the adopted Bike Ways Plan, and the first three projects include Adams, Fourth, and Fifth Streets.
Okay. Before I ask if there's any comments, I just want to comment, that's really good, being so aggressive on those grants. Is there any questions or comments? Anyone? Going once, right? Okay. And can I get a motion to approve? First for Councilman Kel, second, Councilwoman Hiller. Call the vote.
Councilmembers Miller.
Yes.
Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
And Kel.
Yes.
All right. We have nine yes. The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. If we go ahead and move on to Item 5D. Brenda, to read.
D is a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project number 701063, 281250 Phase 5, 501105 Phase 12, and 501106 Phase 2, street construction and water line and stormwater improvement for northeast Curtis Street from Curtis Fly Off to Monroe Street.
And City Manager.
Deputy Mayor and Governing Body, Mr. Copley will make this presentation as well.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you. And I will point out that this resolution was approved by the Public Infrastructure Committee, so I would certainly ask for any comments that they have. But basically, in a nutshell, this project is for the complete reconstruction of Curtis from the Curtis Fly Off to Monroe Street, which is basically by the elevator on the east side of the Kansas Avenue Bridge on the north side of the river. This is a joint utilities public works project, including full-depth reconstruction of the road, replacement of an old cast water line, as well as some storm sewer work. And with that, I'll gladly answer any questions about the project and would defer to the PI Committee if it has any comments.
Questions or comments? Councilman Dobler.
Move approval.
Okay. Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Banks. Call the roll.
Councilmembers Dobler.
Yes.
Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
And Miller.
Yes.
We have nine yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to 5E. Brenda, if you could read.
He has a resolution introduced by the Public Infrastructure Committee comprised of Councilmembers Sylvia Ortiz, David Banks, and Neil Dobler, recommending approval of project numbers 841097 Phase 10, 281250 Phase 14, 291143 Phase 2, and 501106 Phase 4 for street improvement, including curb, gutter, and sidewalks, as well as water line, stormwater, and wastewater improvement for southeast 29th Street from Adams Street to California Avenue.
Thank you. City Manager.
Deputy Mayor and Governing Body, Braxton Copley, our Public Works Director, is on this one as well.
Braxton.
Thank you. This project is for a street improvement on 29th from Adams to California. The street improvement project is contemplated to be mill and overlay with full-depth patching where needed. In addition, we are partnering with the utilities to take advantage of this project to include water main replacement, some storm sewer work, replacement of some old CMP, as well as some sanitary sewer point repairs. This was approved by the PI Committee. I'll gladly stand for any questions and defer to the Committee for any comments.
Questions or comments? Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Just wanted to say that, you know, we've all heard a lot of complaints about condition of the streets over the last year or so. It seems like every week we see the results of the hard work, particularly from public works, but also the utilities of putting these dollars from the half-cent citywide sales tax and other funding literally onto the streets. We're going to see a lot of construction. It's going to be a lot of cones and detours and things like that, but that's what it takes to get this done. So appreciate the work that's been done by Braxton and his team. Thank you.
Any other comments? I would just say before we move to a vote that I think that the work, again, I would concur with Councilman Dobler, we know that we're seeing a lot of cones out there. We know that we're seeing a lot of having to go different routes, and that makes people definitely unhappy and grouchy sometimes, but the city and the departments are putting the money, the people's money, where our mouths are, and we're doing it. And I think that the PWI Committee is doing an absolutely epic job with moving all of this through. So is there any other comments? If not, we can go to a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Councilman Banks, motion first, and then second was Councilman Kel. And if we could call the roll.
Councilmembers Duncan.
Yes.
Hofer.
Yes.
Hiller.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Ortiz.
Yes.
Banks.
Yes.
Kel.
Yes.
And Miller.
Yes.
And Dobler.
Yes.
We have nine yes. The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 5F. City Clerk, if you could read.
F is a resolution introduced by the Policy and Finance Committee comprised of Councilmembers Marcus Miller, Spencer Duncan, and Michelle Hofer, authorizing the use of $790,000 from the Unassigned Reserve Fund for the replacement of the IT infrastructure of computer network switches.
And City Manager.
Deputy Mayor and Governing Body, Randy Stahl, the city's IT Director, will make this presentation to you.
Hello, Director Stahl. Go ahead.
Hi. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and Council. The purpose of this project is to upgrade 125 network switches across the computer network within the city. The network switches are all interconnected to all the computer devices across the city facilities and back to the city data center. And so the switches make all our entire network talk to each other. So it's pretty important. The existing switches have exceeded their lifespan of five years. They're now at 10-plus years old, and so we're looking to replace all of those switches. And per the Committee's recommendation to go ahead and purchase all the switches due to the inflationary costs that we're seeing, we're asking for the full amount.
Okay. No? Is there any questions or comments? Councilman Duncan.
So when we talked about buying them all at once, one of the questions we had in committee was, do we have enough space? I told you I had room in my basement, but nobody called, so I'm just going to have enough space somewhere.
So we're working with the vendor to see if we can get delayed delivery.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilman Dobler.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think this is the first use of the fund that we set up, the Unassigned Reserve Fund. I had asked for each time one of these comes forward that we get an accounting of where the fund is, how much we've allocated, and what's left. I'm not seeing that on this one, so I am not going to be able to vote for this unless[1632.88] unless somebody can come forward with that information.
Josh is on his way.
All right. And then I would appreciate if that becomes a part of each one of these in the future.
Yeah, so we transferred $11.7 million into this fund, and this since, let me pull up this spreadsheet, and I can forward to this right now. So this is the first use, so it's $790,000, and then we've also approved Hotel Operation Chiller for $217,000, and then LMI Property Maintenance Rehab Funding for $200,000. That's approximately $2 million, so we'll be at $9.7 million after all this approval.
Great. That answers the question, and if we could just get that?
Yeah, we'll attach it the next time.
I appreciate you're on the ball, Josh, and I thank you for that. Thanks.
I do have a request, Josh, if that for tonight, if the governing body could get an email verifying that as well for tonight, and also have that part of the record, so that community residents can see that as well when they look at our agendas. Okay. Any other questions or concerns? I see none. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Okay, Councilman Miller?
Second.
Councilman Dobler, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Hofer?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
And Duncan?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
All right, so moving on to item 5G. City clerk?
G is a resolution introduced by the Policy and Finance Committee comprised of council members Marcus Miller, Spencer Duncan, and Michelle Hofer, authorizing the use of $217,254 from the Unassigned Reserve Fund for Chiller Rehab at Hotel Topeka.
And city manager?
Deputy Mayor and governing body, Braxton Copley, our Public Works Director and hotel manager extraordinaire, is going to make this presentation to you.
A permanent fixture. Go ahead, Braxton.
Yes, thank you. So we're here today to ask for funding to rehabilitate one of the chillers at Hotel Topeka. Best practice is for any commercial building to have two redundant chillers. We currently have one operational chiller. It's 26 years old. It is beyond its useful life. That is the sole chiller that we have to provide cool air to Hotel Topeka. We desperately need to have a second chiller because, God forbid, that 26-year-old York chiller would go out or need to come down for maintenance. We have no way to adequately cool the hotel. This was presented to the Policy and Finance Committee, and I would defer to them if they have any comments, but I would respectfully ask for approval and will happily stand for any questions.
Comments, questions, governing body? Councilman Duncan?
Just two quick things. As Chair of the Committee, Councilman Dobler already hinted that this is the next expense from the fund that we created, just so everyone understands that, from the reserve fund. And then committee reviewed this, and despite some emails we get to the contrary, people are staying at Hotel Topeka, people are using Hotel Topeka, and things are being booked at Hotel Topeka, and they would like air conditioning this summer. So that is why we need this to be approved. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on the governing body? Comments, questions? Okay, motion to approve, anyone?
So moved.
Councilman Duncan, and second?
Second.
Councilman Miller, call the vote.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla?
No.
Councilmembers Ortiz?
No.
Banks?
No.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Hofer?
Yes.
All right, we have six yes, with Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla voting no, Ortiz and Banks also voting no, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Now moving on to, where are we, 5H, is that right, Brenda?
Yes.
Okay, can you go ahead?
H is an ordinance introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstad, authorizing the execution of an agreement between the city of Topeka, Kansas and the state of Kansas, acting by and through the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the purpose of obtaining a loan from the Kansas Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund for the purpose of financing a wastewater treatment project, establishing a dedicated source of revenue for repayment of such loan, authorizing and providing for the issuance of combined utility revenue bond Series 2024A of the city of Topeka, Kansas, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing and approving certain documents in connection with such loan and bonds, and authorizing certain other actions in connection with the agreement and such bonds.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
Deputy Mayor and governing body, this presentation will be made to you by Ben Hart, our interim chief financial officer, and Josh McInerney, our budget director.
Hello, Ben and Josh again. Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. As you may or may not be aware, Kansas Department of Health and Environment provides or runs a state revolving fund dubbed SRF. Cities in the state can obviously take care or take advantage of that revolving fund. A couple of reasons why you would do that, the KDHE will allow those funds, the amortization, be drawn out to a longer period than what the market typically says. The number one reason cities take advantage of that is the interest rate. The interest rate in this, these bonds are just over 2%. And in the market today, it could be double that number. So at $20 million, that's quite a bit of interest. What this ordinance does is authorize the execution of the actual agreement between the city and KDHE in order to move forward. It has 50 some pages, 59 pages of legal language in there that spells out exactly what takes place, when the bonds are issued, et cetera, and how they're issued. With us tonight is Kalen Dwyer from Columbia Capital, the city's municipal advisor, along with Kevin Cowan from Gilmore and Bell, if there's any questions.
Thank you for that. Is there any questions, comments? Councilman Miller?
Thank you. Matthew, just a question, do you legally look over this? Everything good?
Amanda might have a better idea about that. Apologize.
What was that? I missed that. She's all alone. Oh, city attorney, are you?
It didn't. It wasn't one that came across my desk, but I assume that.
Sorry. I'm sorry. This is Amanda Stanley, city attorney. Yes, we have thoroughly reviewed it. Our bond counsel is comfortable with it. Kevin is happy to stand for any questions if you have specific legal questions on the bond issues, but yes, I am comfortable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, city attorney.
Question?
Was there anything else? Councilman Miller?
No, I'm good.
Councilman Miller? Councilwoman Miller?
Thank you. You said the 2% interest rate?
Just over 2%. It's like 2.11, I believe.
Which is really favorable. We've learned in time that the shorter the term, the less we spend total, no matter what the interest rate is. And you mentioned that these were longer-term bonds. What are you expecting or recommending that we buy?
They can be longer-term. I think the amortization on this was set for 20 years.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Move approval.
Councilman Dobler, and a second?
Second.
Councilman Miller, call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Ortiz? Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. And we move now to 5I. City clerk?
I is a resolution introduced by interim city manager Richard Neinstad prescribing the form and details of and authorizing and directing the sale and delivery of not to exceed $20,501,902 aggregate principal amount of combined utility revenue bonds Series 2024A of the city of Topeka, Kansas, previously authorized by the ordinance of the issuer, making certain covenants and agreements to provide for the payment and security thereof, and authorizing certain other documents and actions connected therewith.
Okay, city manager?
Deputy Mayor and governing body, Mr. Hart and Mr. McInerney will again lead this discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This is a companion resolution that went with the previous ordinance. What this does is actually authorize and direct the actual sale of the revenue bonds. The debt itself takes the structure of a revenue bond. I think you guys are somewhat familiar with that. KDHE is the sole holder of those bonds. They'll be purchasing them by themselves. There won't be any other buyer of those bonds. So what this does is allow us to move forward with the sale of those bonds themselves.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, governing body, concerns? Okay, can I get a motion? Okay, Councilman Dobler, second. Councilman Cal, call the vote.
Councilmembers Ortiz?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hofer?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
All right, we have nine yes, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. We are now at the end of that part of the agenda. We are moving on to public comment. I see that we have three individuals signed up. I will call the individuals signed up to speak for general public comment to the podium. Each person will have four minutes to address the governing body. The first on the list I have is Ms. Sandra Lassiter.
Yes. Greetings to all of you, deputy mayor and city council, and to our newcomers or new persons. Good to see you here this evening. Real quickly, I want to address the Dreams Grant that our Tennessee town had applied for. It's our understanding that we applied for that grant and have not heard where we are in the process. So my concern is that we applied on last year, and this was given to us, well, some information was given to us that we probably would receive it by January or February. Our concern is that we have an annual basketball tournament in August, and for those of you that may or may not be aware, we have led the way on the day out against crime and joined together with the night out against crime. So it's been very successful and going on about 16 years now, for those of you that may not be familiar with who we are. So when I stand, I'm not standing as a lone person. I'm standing representing community at large. We have children and families that come in from all over this city to participate in the tournament, but also now. One of the young men addressed me this evening, said, when are we going to get our new basketball backstop? When are we going to get? I said, I'll try to get some information on it. Now, my concern is I feel like that I've gone through several persons, and I feel like I've gone to the top to try to get answers, and my answers are, there's some more internal information or procedures, there's some more planning. And my concern is that in planning, then if it was implemented and confirmed that we got it, we just want to know where we are. We certainly would like to know before summer, because these children and families are still coming to the court. They may seem like they're kind of poor. Are there people that you say, oh, they're coming to the court? They love their court. And as it's looking a little raggedy, and I'm embarrassed, because we never do anything raggedy in Tennessee town. So I came to ask tonight, where are we with our Dreams money? That's one. I'd like another minute, but I don't know. Do I have another minute?
Yes.
Because I want to address another issue.
Yes.
Okay. I was over near 17th and Adams on Saturday. A young man, looks like he attempted suicide, and he was standing on the bridge, and our officers were in place with an intervention team. And so me and another young person was there, and another person was there. And I was trying to get his attention, not to interfere, but appreciate the intervention. But we began to pray for this young man. I thought, we don't need to lose another life of a youth. Now, my biggest concern was when I went to the gas station there, and the people were talking. They said, well, why was he allowed to come back on Saturday when he was just here on Friday doing the same thing? So my concern was, where does the intervention team go with that? Because this child, mental illness, drugs, whatever the case may be, was returned to the scene of his own crime. But I'm so glad the intervention group.
You keep another minute.
I'm glad that the intervention group were able to talk with him and convince him to get down. I mean, it looked like a him at that time. My concern is that he was a youth, and all I wanted to ask, which I will call in chief, and anybody else can give me the answer, where do we go once we make intervention? Because this was a repeat from Friday to Saturday. And we just have a group of people that we feel that are available, social workers, mental health workers, who are available to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City manager, with Ms. Lassiter's concerns about the Dreams, is there someone that can reach out to her? With Ms. Lassiter's concerns about Dreams, is there someone that we can get to reach out to her? Okay.
And I will talk to her tomorrow and have her reach out to her.
And is there also someone that can help Ms. Lassiter understand, because I'm not fully cognizant of it, with the protocol, with the mental health concerns that she has?
I believe there's a couple of people I can talk to.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for that. Second for public comment is Henry McClure.
And deputy mayor?
Hello.
Good to see you all. Cheers. Bear with me here a minute. Red Basket Farmer's Market $200. Shawnee Heights Foundation Event for Talent Initiatives, $300. New Mount Zion Baptist Church Third Annual Community Drive Through Dinner, $300. Note Toad Entertainment District Diversity and Inclusion, $500. Kansas Association of School Boards, $500. THA Inc. Grant for Housing Authority Incubator, $700. Washburn University Leadership Institute Challenge Event, $1,500. YMCA Northeast Emerging Leader Scholarship, $2,000. Here, let's skip down to some good ones. Topeka Center for Peace and Justice, $3,000. Oakland Garden Community Groves, $2,000. Topeka Family Juneteenth Celebration, $2,000. Tender Loving Care Pets Hotel, $2,200. Pitch Contest Winner, $5,000. Filling the Void Enterprises. Whatever, they got $8,000. Forge, $50,000. Washburn Tech, $100,000. PTAC, $134,000. That's a lot of money. All in the name of economic development. That's a line item. That's a line item in Go Topeka's budget, paid for, all with the half-cent sales tax. And there's a whole nother list. And I haven't done all the accounting, because it doesn't look like the accounting that was provided. And I got to thank the county counselor, Rich Eckert, for getting this information. And I think Mr. Cook is supposed to, he said he's having trouble getting information from Go Topeka. That's a shame. But what I'm trying to get him to provide is the application I put in two years ago for $100,000 sewer line, that if we were to put it in back then, in the name of economic development, would have been paid for. Because the, between the sales tax and the property tax, it was like $49,000 the first year, and... So you should have tore down the hotel when we had the chance in the name of economic development. You should have gave the sewer line. Because what I'm worried about is this is just the tip of the iceberg. That I think when we take off more layers of the onion with the Greater Topeka Partnership, there's going to be, there's, I'm calling foul. This is not economic development. And the people that administer, that hired them as the contractor, you're all responsible for this. And this is by far the most discrimination I've ever seen in this town. James Bolton Jr., wait till you see him tomorrow. He's got a speech ready at Jettow. He said, you're the only white guy that I've seen get discriminated on. He goes, I can't believe it. So thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you. And finally, we have Michael Bell.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, Mike.
Very good. My name is Michael Bell. I'm the president of the Tennessee Town Neighborhood Improvement Association. You heard from our secretary treasurer earlier, Sandra Lassiter, and I'm here to echo her comments specifically regarding the Dreams 3 Grant that you all approved back in December. We are grateful for that approval. What's happened, though, unfortunately, is that we were, as the NIA asked to meet deadlines when we wrote that application, we met all of those deadlines. We were told, once the application was approved, that planning what happened during the first quarter of 2024, and then the project would start in earnest as far as us getting the things put in King's Court that were included in the application, the first quarter of December, at the end of March. Here we are at the beginning of May, and nothing still has happened. So we're concerned about that, and I understand that there are things going on with city staff and whatnot that may be delaying that, but again, that's a concern of ours. And any correspondence that would go to Sandy regarding this should also come to me as the NIA president. That's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. City manager, can you make sure any communication goes to both? All right. Thank you for that. And we will now move on to announcements. City clerk?
Okay, for the May 14th agenda, we have one board appointment. We will have one presentation. We have, on the consent agenda, we will have two special events resolutions and three noise exceptions, and then one parking waiver. We also, let's see, for action items, we'll have a resolution of advisability and authorization for Sherwood Park Number Nine Improvement Project, an amendment, and then we have an ordinance on retaliatory eviction, an amendment to that. One discussion on the Trade Board Membership Residency Reform.
Okay, thank you. City manager?
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go ahead and start out with governing body members, starting with Councilwoman Miller.
Thank you. I have a couple of, kind of each different, some incidentals to share. One, I wanted to thank everybody from our last meeting for voting to move the firm project in our CIP from bonding to cash. Just to recap that, that's $2.3 million a year times three years, and that will generate, that move saves 4.11... And that, that will generate, that, that move saves four point one million dollars in taxpayer money. Just really appreciate that. I found out some random information about our colleague, Councilwoman Hofer, the other day. And I just thought you might want to know that she danced in the Nutcracker when she was in high school. And so how about that? I thought that was very cool. She also was on the engineering, she is an engineer, which I think everyone knows. But she was on the engineering team that did TPAC, the original major rehab of TPAC, as well as the jail design and construction. I just, I think that's pretty cool to know. On a little different note, for those who knew Susan Fowler Hensler, who was a good friend of many and a longtime worker, professional with Parks and Rec, she passed away a weekend ago. And it's very sad, and I just want to express a little appreciation for her as a person and all the wonderful contributions she's made to a lot of kids and a lot of programs in, in the county. On a slightly different note again, I want to do a shout out to Shawnee County Emergency Management. I think they've done a stellar job through the various storms and tornado incidents that have been proposed or that have happened around here. And last, I got a call from a constituent of mine that lives in the Ward Mead neighborhood on, on Taylor Street. And we were all talking about cones earlier, and of course, those folks are getting the benefit of the interstate being closed down and people being sent off at McVicker to somehow win their way through neighborhoods if they don't go all the way to Sixth Street to get wherever they're going. We have had some problems with semis in Potlin, which the staff thankfully is working on in terms of maybe some upgraded signage that will run folks off. But nonetheless, this, this individual is a resident on the four hundred block of Taylor. And she reported to me that it wasn't a complaint at all, that she'd been out in her yard and a gentleman had stopped on the street. And he, he told her that, he expressed surprise to her that the block that he was driving through, that she lived on, was so nice. And that he'd been worried when people had been sent off the interstate, that he'd even told his wife not to go through the neighborhoods because it was dangerous there and run down. And he himself had driven through and discovered what a great neighborhood we have in the middle of central Topeka, and even took the time to share that with her. So those are my comments. Thank you.
And last, right? Okay, Councilman Banks. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I attended a ribbon cutting today, Chopper's Kitchen. It is located at twenty fifty Southeast Twenty-Ninth Street. If you get a chance, you ought to stop by there. There's some good food and some good desserts. One of the things that I wanted to make everybody aware of, and that is the Click It Our Ticket campaign. And it will begin May the sixteenth through June the second. I don't know how well that this has been advertised, but there's a lot of people out there speeding. So, June the sixteenth, or May the tw- um, May the sixteenth through June the second. So, slow down and buckle up and be safe. Also, I'd like to say congrats to the graduates. We're starting to have a lot of parties. Again, slow down and be safe. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Banks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just wanted to send a shout out to Tony Barksdale, who puts together a group of young men, young women in the community for some actual training. In our city, we have coaches, whatever they call themselves, teaching kids that do not have coaching qualification. Tony Barksdale puts a, puts together a very serious effort to work with young men and women. And he, he does this type of training without pay. All he asks is that we put kids in that are serious about learning. If they are not serious, he kicks them out. Now, they're allowed to come back, but it is a very, very good attempt. Being a basketball player myself, playing in the Dreams Tournament, put up astronomical numbers. I know some people think, hey, he's boasting. I'm not. Forty, fifty in that tournament was nothing, Councilman Miller. But I just wanted to send a shout out to Tony Barksdale and his crew for the effort. And if you have young people that are interested in really getting some training techniques about the game of basketball, Salvation Army, two to three times a week, and everybody should send their kids there. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman McHale?
Well, I want to say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there coming up this weekend. I got to spend this last weekend with my mother and can spend next week with her. It's all interesting, in fact, though, that Mother's Day is the lowest crime rate day across the U.S. So you know what that means? All the mothers are out there committing the crimes. So keep an eye on your mother. So, as I said, I got to see my mother last weekend, this upcoming weekend. It's graduation season. So congratulations to all the high school grads, college grads. Please feel free to look at City Topeka for an opportunity to work. There's nothing like being a part of your own city and seeing it grow and knowing over time that you developed that. And finally, the Letters Carriers Food Drive reminded me that it's getting that time of year where kids are going to be out of school. And a lot of kids depend on school for a nutritious full meal. And so make sure that you're giving to the food banks, looking out for those youngsters, make sure they're getting fed. You know, spread the word when it comes to programs around the city that will feed lunch to school age children. And that is it, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Miller?
Thank you very much. I hadn't planned one, but a couple of things. First, Michelle, I would love to see that dance sometime, if you have the ability to do so. It'd be great. Secondly, Karen Hiller was correct in mentioning Susan Hensler. You know, we have certain people who really dedicate their lives to community. And Suzie, Susan embodied that with a pure heart and care that was unmatched by people around. And if you knew about her, you knew everything about her. And I just wanted to read a little bit from her obituary if I could, because I think it shouldn't be a footnote. I know what you're trying to do, but it shouldn't be a footnote with, with the impact that she made in this community. Susan was born in May twenty-eighth, nineteen fifty-nine, or nineteen fifty-nine in Ottawa, Kansas, and grew up in Barrington, Kansas. She graduated from Shawnee Heights High School, went away for college, K-State. She returned to Kansas in nineteen eighty-eight and started a career in Shawnee County Parks and Rec, retiring in twenty twenty-two as recreational superintendent. She received many awards and honors during her lifetime for leadership and mentorship, particularly to young women. She was involved in many civic groups, including the Kansas Parks and Recreational Association, the Parents and Teacher Organization at Pleasant Hill Elementary. And she was also elected to the Seaman Board of Education and served as the president from July twenty thirteen to June twenty fourteen. She is survived by two sons. William Joseph Hensler and his partner Jonathan Lee Poc- I'm going to mess that up, Pocquez. And Benjamin Nathan Hensler and his wife Kylie Hensler. If we could, I would just love to have five to ten seconds of a moment of silence for Susan because, you know, you put this kind of time in the community, and we want to make sure that people remember the best way they can. If you can't get to her family and support, I hope that we can put together, she lived right by Collins Park. I hope we can put something together for her in honor of what she did for the community. But if we could, just in this moment, give five to ten seconds of a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Dogger?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Two things, but actually I added another question was, did you score all those points before the three point?
Oh, yeah.
Two things quickly. Twenty years ago, we passed a charter ordinance, the citizens of Topeka did, to set up the City Manager Form of Government, City Manager Council Form of Government. And as part of that, every ten years, there is a review of the charter ordinance. I believe that is coming up in twenty twenty-five, perhaps late twenty twenty-four. So I just, so it doesn't slip through the cracks, ask City Attorney's Office to review that and see what, what that schedule looks like and what we need to do. And maybe have a short presentation on that sometime in June or July. It'd be great. The other thing I'd like to have a little bit of discussion on, it doesn't have to be next week. But I've, I've received some complaints about parks in our community. I think county, the county overall does a great job. I think they focus on, on some of the big stuff perhaps, and some of the little stuff slides, slides under the radar. And a few of those things are in my district, and I hear about them. Of course, a lot of people think the city still owns the park system, so their first call is, is to the city. I would like just a discussion about how that works. I mean, we, we voted to give our parks to the county to run. I think we retained not much control, if any, but at least some semblance of oversight. And if we didn't, perhaps it's time we look at what it might take to bring back some of that. So just a, a bit of a discussion about that sometime in the near future would be appreciated. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Duncan?
Thank you. I'd like the record to reflect that I did not laugh when Councilman Banks was outlining his basketball stats. So the rest of you, that's your problem, but I, I got it. You know, I, I showed a little frustration tonight on the Twenty-Ninth and Villa West project. And I, I said this before, I guess I'll keep saying it. If you're going to develop something in a district, just come talk to us, council people who represent that district, you know? It, it helps a long way because we can help answer constituent questions. We can understand what you're doing. If you keep not talking to us, it makes us really hard to be super supportive if we don't have any communication with you. So not just to those developers, but for all of them. It's just, just a good rule of thumb, kind of helps us, but it really does help you too. My office hours for May, June, and July are posted now. I had some questions about that. You can go to my Facebook page, or you can go to my website, Duncan for Topeka. My schedule's there for the next three months. The Policy and Finance Committee has started the review process for the ARPA funds. To date, there's almost about one point five million dollars that has not been unencumbered or used yet from the ten million dollars that we started with. So what we talked about in that meeting, and as I broaden the discussion tonight, more people are listening, is if you're one of those groups who hasn't spent it yet, come talk to us soon, because as we said repeatedly through that process, it is use it or lose it. If you are not able to spend it by the end of this year, we just need to understand what's going on so that we can work with you to preserve those funds either for your project or for the city, because otherwise it has to revert back to the state, the federal government. And so we don't want to lose a million and a half dollars from this community. So that process has started. We're in communication with those projects, and we'll continue those conversations. As Councilmember Ortiz mentioned, we've got lots of graduations that'll start coming up over the next few weeks. And that's always a great positive as we get towards the end of the school year. The negatives of the end of the school year is there are always really good teachers who start to announce their retirements. I mean, they deserve that retirement, but man, you hate to just lose good teachers. Two of those have been at my, currently my son's school, previously at my niece's school. And that's Ruth Bomas, who's a fourth grade teacher in Maryland Kido, who's now teaching third, but has taught some other grades. They've been there, Bomas, twenty-plus years each, teachers for thirty-plus, almost forty years in one case. They've been wonderful teachers. It is a great loss to the Topeka community with them and many others who start to retire this year. So, so when you see those retirements, make sure you take time to, to let those teachers know the impact that they made, because it, it does make a difference to them. And usually, like with a lot of us who do those things, especially teachers, they don't know. They think they do, but they don't know. And so it's always good to hear from folks. Last but not least, my parents this, this month are celebrating their fiftieth wedding anniversary. This past weekend, we had a little celebration for them. Appreciate everyone who was able to make it, but outside of that, for people who weren't, they received lots of, sorry, we can't make it, but congratulations. So I just want to honor my parents for their, for their fifty years, and, and I guess we'll celebrate hopefully again, maybe another. I said fifty, but my dad said maybe give them twenty-five. Maybe I'll get there. So we'll, we'll see if we can celebrate in twenty-five, the seventy-fifth. So, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hofer?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I want to let everyone know, if I can get this to come back up. The Friends of the Topeka Zoo are having their annual plant sale. Right now, it is online, and you can order and pay for plants online. Or Saturday, whatever is left, they will have at the zoo, and you can pick it up then. They are working on increasing our pollinator habitats by exploring the variety of native plants available for purchase at the wildflower, wildflower sale. They have been working with schools all over town to set up pollinator gardens. A lot of those plants have already gone out to those gardens, and they're, they probably planted and they're getting them set up, watered, and ready to go for the pollinators to come in. These are the same type plants that they will have for sale, and we'd like to increase our bees population among many. But if you get a chance, Saturday morning, they'll be at the zoo at eight AM, and you can purchase whatever plants. The plants are four dollars apiece. And it'd be great for our community to help our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I just wanted to have a couple of things. This last week, a number of us from the new Civic Group, which I think council people have been given updates on and has been in some media spotlight. Civic, which is the Community Violence Intervention Coalition. We were flown out to Aurora, Colorado for several days to collaborate with, among others, the Center for Disease Control, NACHO, which is the National Association of County, and city health officials, and also the National League of Cities from D.C. The amount that we learned about best practices for moving forward with a public health approach to address violence through the lens of equity. In this entire country, Topeka was only one of four cities chosen to obtain this opportunity. We heard, learned, and discussed with other communities that have been doing this work for decades. Our next step as a group is to continue with our technical assistance, and with each step, utilize the evidence-based program to make sure we, as civic, drive all forward from the community level specifically, and coming from a strong data-driven approach. So it was a very intense three days, a lot of meetings that were back to back to back. We're going to be having some folks come in for a site visit from Cities United, which we are very excited about. This is a very large, I wouldn't say a large group, but it, very intentional group in that this violence prevention, this violence interruption that we are formulating, formulating is going to be deeply embedded along with community, looking to community for their input, not assuming we know the answers, utilizing methodology that cities across the country have been using for at least a couple of decades. So very excited about that. Also, a shout out to my two nietos, which is grandchildren in Spanish in their teams. My grandson Adrian goes to Topeka West, and he is part of the track team. I don't know what the thirty-two hundred is in track, but I think it's a long way to run. I think it may be two miles. I'm not absolutely sure. Okay. And he came in first. So, miho, I love you, and we love you. And also my granddaughter Kennedy, who's in seventh grade at Jardine. Her team on soccer was undefeated in five oh one, the middle school, seventh and eighth graders. So good job, not only miho Kennedy, but also to the entire soccer team there at Jardine. So with that said, I do believe there is a need for two executive sessions. And will the city attorney state the motion for the first session, please?
Yes, I will. The motion would be to recess into executive session.
The motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed one hour to discuss candidates for city manager, as allowed under KSA 754319 subsection B1. The open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. The following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations. City Attorney Amanda Stanley, senior city attorney Matt Mullen, and any other staff the governing body finds useful.
Thank you. A motion to approve by Councilwoman McHell, second? Oh, Councilman Dobewar? And can we... Okay, all in favor? Vote aye. Aye. All opposed? No? Okay. So, I have... How many votes is that? Nine? Nine? Nine votes? Okay. And so, I think we give it 10 minutes before. So, I have 7:30. If we could be back here to get it started crisply at 7:40, and we will go from there.
Thank you.
Okay, we have reconvened the meeting and are now back in open session with no action being taken by the governing body during the executive session. We do have a need for a second executive session. And will the city attorney state the motion?
Yes, the motion would be to recess into executive session, not to exceed 30 minutes to discuss matters relating to security measures, as allowed under KSA 754319 subsection B2. Open meeting will resume in the city council chambers. Following staff will be necessary to assist the governing body in its deliberations. Police Chief Brian Willis, Fire Chief Randall Phillips, City Attorney Amanda Stanley, Senior City Attorney Matt Mullen, and any other staff the governing body thinks useful.
Thank you for that. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman McHell, second? Councilman Dobewar, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Say no? Okay, what do we have? Eight? Eight? And so, we will just go directly into the second executive session. Okay, we have reconvened the meeting and are now back in open session with no action being taken by the governing body during the executive session. So, if there is no further business appearing before the governing body at this time, this meeting is adjourned.